Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, March 11th, 2024, meeting to order. I think everybody's noticed this year, we've actually had pastors throughout the community come out and give an invocation and maybe tell us a little bit about their church. Thanks to Reverend Hathaway, we kind of, the board working with Reverend Hathaway, set this up. So if anybody out there, we've got a big crowd night, wants their pastor or preacher to come give the invocation, a little bit about what they're doing before the meetings, we would love to have them. So with that, Reverend Hathaway, would you leave us an invocation and pledge? Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you were expecting my pastor to come out ahead of Martha, but we spent a month celebrating.
Celebrating our 20th anniversary, and I think she overexerted herself. I'm not sure I'm a suitable sub, but she will be rescheduled. Whenever we gather in numbers like this, I know that there are a number of different traditions of faith, and so I invite you to pray in your tradition as I lead us in prayer. Let's pray. Our Father and our God, how grateful we are for all the blessings that you've given us, the opportunity to gather tonight as citizens of this community, to work with our leaders for the betterment of all of our citizens. We thank you for the leaders that you've given us, and we pray that you would bless them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, so that decisions that they make help move New Kent forward. We thank you that we are a wonderful community, and through their help and our partnership, we will continue to be that shining light in this Commonwealth. All these things we ask in your name. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hathaway, as always. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Good mo- good evening, and welcome everyone here this evening. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns?
No, Mr. Chair, I approve, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, and that it may be made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other comments? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Since we have a large crowd tonight, I'm going to change up the agenda a little bit. I'm going to let the residency administrator go first, and for anybody out there that does not know, during the citizens' comment period tonight, the Woodhaven Property Owners Association, if you want to speak, you would need to sign up during the citizens' comment period, because it is not a public hearing. So if you do want to speak about the request on the dam, it needs, you need to be signed up for the citizens' comment period.
Is it on? It's on. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall, Winwood, VDOT. This past month, we had 98 work orders. We completed 88, and had one call out. Doing pothole repair, grading on hard surface roads, shoulder and ditch repair, pipe replacement and cleaning, tree and brush removal and cleanup, and trash pickup. One thing I do want to bring to y'all's attention, we do have a public hearing Thursday about the I-64 Gap Project, Section B. So that's at 5 o'clock Thursday evening, 5 to 7 o'clock. Other than that, I don't have anything else, unless y'all have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Win. Mr. Moyer?
And, and that's 5 to 7 at New Kent Elementary?
Correct. I'm sorry, I left that out.
No, no problem, I'm bringing it up anyway. Thanks for all you do, thank you for all that work that's been done this past week. And I have looked at the work order, that I see that the marketplace light is sitting there waiting, just waiting for parts. So we appreciate that when that gets in.
All right, it'll be this summer sometime.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right.
Ms. Pearson?
Hi, Mr. Win. Thank you for all you've done for me. Bit of a pain, I know. The only question I have is on the Kent Hurst.
We've got.
Are the trees going to come down?
Yeah, within the next couple of weeks. We're waiting on our contractor to get in there. It's not a couple, it's like four or five large trees, and then we'll go cut the smaller trees back for better sight distance, so within the next two weeks, should be completed.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Ms. Steers?
I guess, Mr. Win, thank you for being here this evening. I recently got a phone call from the Province Forest Replanting Club, and they want to do, adopt a highway, and just picking up trash and debris along the highway. And since we have an outsourced source that does our major highways, I suggested Kentland Trail and the Chesapeake Circle. You know, I've mentioned it to you before, behind Dairy Queen, people pull in there, get their lunch, and they pull over in the shade, eat their lunch, and throw the trash on the ground. So I'd suggested them adopting Kentland Trail and Chesapeake Circle with your permission.
Well, there is a form they have to fill out.
Okay.
So just let me know, and I can get with the person that does that work, and she can reach out to them and let them know what they have to do.
Okay, and also, would we be able to get the supplies we need, the collect the vests and crapper sticks?
Yes, we'll put up, we'll put up signs in their name and that sort of thing, and we supply the vests, the pickers, the bags, and all that stuff.
Okay, they want to start, the first scheduled pickup is Saturday, March 23rd.
Better hurry up and get the forms done.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Win, for answering my calls and emails. You guys make me feel better that I'm not the only one that bugs you repeatedly, so I appreciate you answering whenever I call, especially to Mr. Terry as well. We had two, I talked with him last week about two signs, speed limit signs that were down on Good Hope Road. I don't know if you were aware of that, or if you knew the status, if they're back up or not, at 4575 and 4501, Good Hope Road. But other than that, just appreciative of all the work. I know we had a lot of rain and flooding, especially in my district, so Mr. Terry was very on top of all the signs, so appreciate y'all's help on that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson?
I had one more thing, and I don't know if you have any pull with the adopt a highway thing, but the Clean County Committee, we put in the application to adopt Page Road in memory of the Honorable Patricia Ann Page, so, and we were, we were trying to get the Youth Service Committee involved in that also, and I know you have to have so many per.
Yeah, they have so many, so many adults per.
Yeah, that's.
Having many children they are, yeah.
Right, so we're trying to get them involved. They're going to be at the Clean County meeting tomorrow evening, and I don't know if you can, I haven't heard back from them. I put it in about, I guess, five days ago, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a couple. Mr. Terry's not here, is he?
No.
I know, we, we went out a month ago with, Almount Prospect Road, cleaning the ditches. I know y'all have had a lot of rain. I think along with Ms. Stewart, my district got flooded pretty well, so just make sure that's still on the list, and I'd like to add Steel Trap Road to the grading list. And it's a bunch of bad potholes on Hopewell Road.
Okay. We'll get with him in the morning.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Win. I know y'all have had your hands full lately, so appreciate everything you're doing out here in New Kent.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we'll have the citizens' comment period. Could you bring the sign up sheet, please? When I call your name, I'll ask you to come to the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please say your name and address for the record. Next, first we have Janice Harland.
Hello, thank you for entertaining our ti- your time. I am a Woodhaven resident, have been a resident since 1980.
Can you please state your name and record, I mean, name and address for the record?
Janice Harland, 7614 Lakeshore Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. I've been a Woodhaven and a New Kent resident since 1986, raised my children here through the school systems. Of course, I'm a taxpayer. I've been a member of the Woodhaven Board. This is my third time. As far as I'm aware, Woodhaven has never asked for anything assistance-wise from the county, and we maintain our own roads and our own water. This has come to us as a request from the DCR. We don't have a choice in this matter as far as our dam goes, and we're hoping to get some help from the county with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Davidson? Jill Davidson, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Jill Davidson. I live at 7018 Lakeshore Drive. I'm also a board member for Woodhaven, and we, you know, we pay our taxes, we pay our property taxes, gas taxes, and we really need assistance with this dam project that we've been working on, and I hope that you all will pass and help us get some assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is the mic working? Mike, it is? Can everybody hear out there? I didn't think it could.
I don't think it's plugged in, because there's a cord hanging in there.
It's wireless. Can you hear us okay in the back? All right, next is Randy Buchanan.
Randy Buchanan, 7546 Lakeshore Place, Quentin, Virginia. I'm a WPOA member and a resident of Woodhaven, and I just wanted to step up and let everyone know that, that our community supports county supervisors' position, and we greatly appreciate Ron's efforts in helping us out in, in this unfunded mandate that has put us through an intense amount of stress and anxiety over multiple years. We're talking over 15 years of changes in regulations and all that stuff. Anyway, also want to provide support for WPOA's position when they do their presentation, and would like to convey the amount of, already conveyed the amount of stress and anxiety that this has created for our, our neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Paul Greiner?
I'm Paul Greiner, 7200 Lakeshore Drive. I'm going to be brief. My intent is not to recap, but David Smith has already told the board on what we're up against with the, with the dam. I guess I want the board to know that we've, we tried to comply with the state's ever-changing design criteria on the high, because classified as a high-hazard dam. And we haven't really ignored our responsibilities. We've really tried hard to comply. And from what I understand, we spent around 100K in engineering hour, in engineering fees, and endless hours trying to comply with the DCR requirements. But now we're at a point where the completion of the dam design, and we got the federal and state funding ready for apply for. So I guess we need county support in backing Woodhaven shores to get this project behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Tash?
I'll defer, I'll defer my time to Holly.
Hollie Berry? There's still only three minutes a person.
No problem.
Okay.
No problem.
So Hollie Berry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm actually.
You're up.
Oh, you're presenting?
Yeah, I'm giving a presentation, so I'll just save all my.
Oh, okay. No problem. Mary? Tashis? Sorry, I butchered that.
Hi, my name's Mary Kate Tossage. I live at 7568 Lakeshore Drive, and I've been a resident here in Crenton since 19, no, sorry, 2007. We moved here from Southern California, and the main reason why I moved here was to retire. We're on a lake, and we have, for the last 17 years, have enjoyed all of the wildlife. We have wonderful eagles that we get to see almost every single day. All the heron, the baby ducks, the baby geese when spring hits, and if our lake goes away, it would just be, it'd be very sad for both my husband and I to not be able to enjoy that anymore. So I'm looking forward to having the Board of Supervisors help us in any way they can to help us get the dam repaired, so that we can continue to enjoy our retirement and enjoy New Kent as much as we have since we've moved here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Billy Heron?
Thank you. My name is Billy Heron. I'm a resident at 6108 Lakeshore Drive in Quentin, Virginia. I've been in Woodhaven now for about six years. I'm also part of the Woodhaven, the dam committee. In the past year, my position on the committee, I've learned a lot about dams, and like everybody else is saying, our present dam is, dates back to 1959. It's lived 65 years, and we're looking forward to be able to re, to take the dam for another 50-plus years. Our committee men, other committee members and myself, we monitor the rain, water level, we review upcoming rain events, adjust our lake level by operating a valve we have to control the lake level. And we have seen and noticed a significant amount of more water entering the lake. We feel this is due to the amount of development in the county. Our, our watershed area is over 10 square miles, so anything that's clear-cut, anything that's done, that water is entering into our lake. The additional water requires the WPOA to activate our hydraulic valve more often to control the lake levels. So we look forward to having you assist us, and we appreciate the Board and supervisor's support for our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana Brockelent?
Hi, I'm Ariana Brockelenti. I live at 6401 Lakeshore Drive, Quentin, Virginia. I've been a resident of New Kent County since 1990, and I purchased my home in Woodhaven in 98. I live in one of the original houses of the community, and it was built in 1959. During that time, of course, I paid my taxes, and I've had multiple cars on the road. With a teenager, there were at least three cars on the road in my, in my household. I have observed over the years the increased amount of runoff, you know, related to what Mr. Heron said, that has, that is now flowing into the lake as a result of a development of, up along 106 and in our watershed area. I recognize that increased commerce is, is, is key for success of this county and, and supporting our school systems and, and the tax revenue. However, it is having a cost on our, our dam. There's more than seven miles of roads, I believe, in Woodhaven, and upwards of 500 property, properties. And all of us have, over the 65 years in which that subdivision has been there, have maintained our own roads with our own fees that we pay to the, the WPOA. We do our own snow clearance and repairs to the road, including, while I've been living there, I've seen a refinishing of the dam and a redoing of the spillway that we had, and the changes in regulations have just put it out of our reach as, as property owners to, to fund. And even though we have lined up some state and federal funding that'll cover the greater cost, it still leaves a lot outside of the reach of, of those who live within this community, and I thank you for your consideration of our request, particularly since a failure of this dam would be a huge cost to the community. It would wipe out Route 60, which is an emergency route, and there are quite a few homes that have now built south of 60, along 106 to the Chickahominy, and the dam is, the, the, the valve that Billy mentioned being opened is now being opened much more frequently, and in fact, it's now, as we've been measuring the lake level, every inch of rain we get results in an eight-inch rise in lake level. And if we can't open the valve, then that stresses the spillway, and then it puts those below the dam at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. David Matham?
David Matham, 6042 Lakeshore Drive. I've been a resident of Woodhaven over 30 years, and living on the lake, sort of notice when it rains real hard, the water comes up. Recently, in the past 10 years, every time somebody builds a house, paves another road, puts in a sidewalk, we get that much more water quickly. The other thing is, I'm also on the water company. When this dam project kicks off, we're going to have to spend a huge chunk of money to re, to replace a water line that presently runs through the dam. Citizens of Woodhaven are going to have to bear that cost too, and I'm also hearing that DEQ is going to require us to replace a couple wells, which the community is also going to bear that cost. So keep in mind that we have a lot we're going to pay for already. Thank you.
Thank you. John Lockwood?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Lockwood, 20251 Triangle Road, Barrensville, Virginia. And I'm going to talk about something other than the dam. I'd like to just thank you for moving the project for Old Ferry forward. Mr. Hathaway and I worked on that project for at least a couple of years, and this community of Plum Point is often overlooked. This is a county-owned road, and I would really like to see the full support of the board in getting that road paved. There are handicapped children that live down that road. If the bus isn't able to get down there, they're not getting picked up. It causes a lot of hardship. Kids have to walk to the end of the road because it is not a state road or up to state standard. So I think moving forward, it will save a tremendous amount of time and maintenance, and I hope that all of the members of the board will vote in approval of the paving of Old Ferry Road. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our citizens' comment period. Thanks everyone for speaking tonight. Next, we'll go into our presentations. Item one, Woodhaven Property Owners Association requests for assistance with repairs to the dam. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You have before you this, this evening for consideration, a request from the Woodhaven Property Owners Association, a request for assistance to repair the dam that is located over Lakeshore Drive. I've been informed by, by the residents, by the community, that the anticipated cost is $1.5 million. I've also been informed that the community has received notice of a federal grant award that would pay 65% of that cost, which would leave a balance of 500 and. which would leave a balance of five hundred and twenty, I'm sorry. That sixty-five percent would equal $975,000, which would leave a balance of $525,000 for this project. There is also a state grant that is available through DCR that requires a dollar-for-dollar max. So therefore, the state would provide $262,500. And there is a request for the Board of Supervisors to provide the matching funds in the amount of $262,500. Both grants, the federal and state grants, are reimbursement grants. So therefore, the county would be requested to front the $1.5 million or the final cost of the project. And as work is completed, the county would be reimbursed. I do want to clarify one item that I've gotten clarification from, from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. The road that lies over the spillway and dam, Lake Shore Drive would qualify for the use of our local share of Central Virginia transportation funding. But we would need to submit a plan, the engineering plans, which I've not seen yet, to CVTA for determination of how much CVTA funding could be applied to this project. Therefore, we might not be able to pay the entire amount out of our CVTA funds, which is not a problem for us because we do have adequate funding in our capital reserves. But I just wanted to bring to your attention, as I previously stated, that I believe that CVTA would pay for this. It might be a partial payment instead of full. This evening, we have Mrs. Holly Berry from the Woodhaven Property Owners Association here with a PowerPoint presentation to speak on behalf of the community.
Right click. No. Oh, got it. Am I clicking the center? There we go. I'll go back. Okay. Good evening, Chairman Evelyn, members of the Board. Again, my name's Holly Berry. And I am here with some lovely members of the Woodhaven Property Association requesting funding for our dam and spillway project. The Department, sorry, the Department of Conservation and Energy, I'm going to refer to them as DCR, and the Woodhaven Property Owners Association, I'll call them WPOA. DCR informed our POA several years ago that we are required to expand our spillway so as to preserve the infrastructure of the dam and the roadways downstream. This means that the length of our spillway will increase and a portion of the road that runs across the spillway will need to be replaced. To give you a brief background, the dam and the roadway being discussed provides access to the east side of Kent Lake. Many residents rely on this road to access their homes. Additionally, this road is used daily for school buses and for emergency vehicles as needed. If the dam and the roadway were to fail, it would most certainly impact Route 60, which as mentioned before, is New Kent's emergency evacuation route. And it would also impact a number of properties downstream. As mentioned before, DCR is requiring the expansion of the WPOA spillway and dam. And we are asking for the county for funding in the amount of $1.5 million, with $1.2 million of that amount to be later reimbursed to the county. If funding is approved, DCR will review the plans and specs. Then WPOA will disseminate those to go out to bid. Then contractors will provide the final price back for the project. We are lucky to have a number of residents who have worked diligently with DCR over the years. And DCR has offered grants that WPOA is prepared to apply for. As Mr. Hathaway stated, we've got a combination of federal and state grants. The federal grant will pay sixty-five percent of the total project cost. And the state grant will pay fifty percent, fifty percent, excuse me, of the remaining costs, up to $500,000. Again, the deadline for this grant application is March fifteenth, that's this week. And we must have an assurance of financing before we can submit the grant. Here's a breakdown of those numbers just once more. Again, we are asking for $1.5 million. Sixty-five percent of that would be covered by the federal grant. And the remaining state grant would cover up to half of $500,000. This leaves only $262,500 that would not be reimbursed to the county. This is a conceptual drawing of our spillway and road. The top part is what we're working with now. And the bottom part, if you see the little extra bit of green topography, we've got a little bit of a spillway now. And when it comes up, it's going to come up two feet, extend three hundred and fifty feet, come up another two feet, and then extend. That three hundred and fifty feet is the partial, the portion of roadway that's going to need to be extended. And that extended green part is the extended length of the spillway. And if anybody has any technical questions regarding that, I've got someone here to answer this. Road funding in New Kent County is generated through a gasoline tax that residents pay. WPOA has roughly five hundred residences and equivalent to about a thousand vehicles. These are vehicles that have been purchasing gasoline in the area, contributing to the gas tax and road funding for years. This funding is meant to be used to repair both public and private roads. And we are aware of some other private roads that have planned to request the use of the funds without a provision of being reimbursed. Woodhaven, in compliance with DCR, is requesting utilization of the road fund tax to preserve our neighborhood, Route 60 and the downstream properties, per being mandated by the state. Again, if funded, WPOA would return ninety percent of this project cost to the county. It's important to note, and I believe one of our citizens said earlier, that WPOA has always privately maintained our roads. We have roughly eleven miles of roadway. We've never requested any funds from the county. If funding is provided, WPOA will continue to be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the dam and the spillway. The county would not be responsible for anything further. Additionally, WPOA is willing to attach a not-to-exceed contract to prevent the project from exceeding the $1.5 million budget request. Again, as mentioned before, due to the increase in development around our neighborhood and with the upcoming I-64 widening project, our lake has incurred additional water, sediment, pollution, all of which affect our lake and dam. WPOA is required to meet state standards in regards to our dam. And our dam has the roadway that runs over it, which requires extra precautions to be made. That's why we are reaching out to the Board and the county to ask for assistance in funding. If this project is not funded, DCR can require WPOA to drain Kent Lake. This would in turn cause annual tax revenue from a plethora of homes in the area. If the dam or road are removed, it would significantly impact the time for emergency vehicles to cross over to the east side of our lake. This would also impact school bus routes. And it would eliminate an entrance and exit route for a number of residences on the east side of the lake. This is just a quick picture to show, we are down in the bottom part, in the little lake V. Up to the right is where New Kent Winery, the Arbers is. In the middle is where the new food line and the roundabout and Dollar General. It just shows all the areas that are in our watershed. And lastly, I would just like to reiterate that if funded, this project would provide a large benefit to the county in protecting some of the infrastructure to Route 60, again, New Kent County's emergency evacuation route. Also, nearly one thousand residents would directly benefit. And most importantly, if funded, the county would receive back ninety percent of their money or one point two of the $1.5 million being requested. I want to thank you all very much for your time and consideration tonight. If you all have any questions, please let us know.
Sure we do. Thank you. Everybody have any questions?
Yes, joining us by Zoom is Mr. David Smith. He communicated to me earlier that he would like the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the community as well. He is the Chair of the Committee that's been appointed to address this issue.
Let him speak before we have questions.
Are you, uh?
Yes, David, you're on.
Oh, okay, because I can barely hear, I can barely hear y'all. But anyway, sorry about that. Just letting you know, my name is David Smith. And my address is 610 Lake Shore Drive. And I've lived in New Kent for forty years and paid real estate taxes on my home and the five waterfront lots that I've got. Also, I've always had a minimum of at least three cars and I've been paying the gas tax for those. But I just wanted to provide some additional information on the funding of the road dam project that Holly didn't cover and some of the stuff she did. But the Department of Conservation and Recreation, she said, is mandating the expansion. And Woodhaven's dam was built around 1959. So the federal and state governments are providing funding through grants to bring dams up to modern standards. So the federal grants provide states with the funding. And the state administers the federal funds. And I can provide more detail on this if you're interested later, if you have questions on that. But this project is not just a dam project, it's also a road project. And due to the road being on the top of the dam, DCR has made us expand it extensively compared to what we originally would have had it done. Also, Woodhaven Dam is different than most, if not all, other dams in the county. Woodhaven Dam is classified as a high-hazard dam and also has a road on top of it. And I don't think there's any other dams like that in the county. There are many benefits associated with the project and would benefit thousands of New Kent residents. And one of the major ones, like Holly had mentioned, was the protection of Route 60. So Route 60 was damaged. All the traffic that would be on there would have to be rerouted through other New Kent roads. And you can imagine what that would be like on the summertime. And also, the road was damaged, how long would it take to get it back up to standards where you could drive across it? And one of the biggest benefits is New Kent will get approximately ninety percent of the cost back through the federal and state grants. And the federal and state grants are guaranteed money. It's not like, it's not going to be there. And approximately a thousand Woodhaven residents will benefit directly. Another big issue was that if we did have to remove the dam, we would lose an entrance and exit to the neighborhood. And that would, that would increase the time emergency vehicles could reach houses on the east side of the lake. And also, if part of the road was blocked, residents would be stuck. They couldn't leave the neighborhood because there'd be only one entrance going in and out. Another benefit that wasn't mentioned was the upstream effects of flooding from the large storms would be reduced by releasing more water from dams. So since the spillway is a lot larger, when we get a huge amount of water coming in the lake, now more water will be released and doesn't back up and flood roads upstream of the dam. So I cannot imagine the county getting more benefit, paying for the bucks, let's say, due to the amount paid back to the county by guaranteed government grants and the thousands of New Kent residents that will benefit from the project. But I do want to thank you very much for your time this evening and your consideration for funding this project. And if other people can't answer questions, I'll be glad to step in.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. Mr. Moore, you got some questions?
I got a question. Does the Woodhaven Homer Association have any funds that would be available for this project?
Probably not the best person to answer that.
My name is Mary Kay Tossage and I work for the Office of Woodhaven Property Owners. We currently do have funds available in, from what's collected from the past years and the current year. We just, excuse me, we just sent out our 2024 billing. So we haven't received all of our funding for this year yet. But we currently have $380,000 in the bank that we can work with. We have several projects that we're working on at the lake right now that are culverts, that are needing to be taken care of. So of that monies, we have, there's about $75,000 that's tied up with the current projects. So roughly, we have about $300,000 that we could probably work with.
Okay, this isn't going to be a question.
That's okay.
It'll be more of an idea.
Okay.
You have, as been explained, ten to eleven miles of road.
Yes, sir.
The Central Virginia Transit Authority monies is to help with roads, not with dams and with roads on top of dams. Would it be possible if you would put that money towards this project that you have? And maybe CVTA can help with road projects within Woodhaven. Because we're looking at only a nut. I don't want to make money on this whole situation, but the county should get a hundred percent back. And if you're able to put that up, if we have to put up the other ninety to get back, it's one of the ideas. The CVTA money, we need to cross our Ts, dot our Is to make sure that's spent correctly. Right now, and that money has only been since 2020. The gas tax before that was not, did not go to the county coffers. It's only since 2020. And so that amount of money each month is a considerable amount. But it could be able to help those other projects. And I have checked today that it can be used for private roads. So that's not a problem. My problem is more using it for the dam road, okay?
I understand.
You know, it's one idea.
Okay.
I think that's what we're looking for, right? Ideas?
Nobody has any, I know that-
Excuse me, I'm Jan Harland. I'm the Treasurer at Woodhaven. I just want to say, of the monies that we have, we only collect dues on an annual basis. So right now, we have quite a bit of money. But we also have to consider that we'll be paying salaries, light bills, et cetera, through the entire year before we have any sort of collection again.
And you only, it's my understanding you only collected about a hundred and ten, fifteen homes out of the five hundred homes that are there?
No, we collect from all but about a hundred and fourteen homes. We collect, I would, if I had to estimate, I would say about $200,000 a year. And again, we have to pay our salaries, et cetera, with that money.
And I think everybody up here wants to try to figure out a way to make something work. But, you know, I know I've had a couple of phone calls from people in my district. I've got Deer Lake, I have two dams and at least that in my district. Like, well, you going to help us if you help them? But I mean, you do have some state money that y'all have been working hard to do. But I know that DCR has been out all over the Commonwealth issuing conditional certificates to a bunch of dams. And it looks like to me that this was issued in 2025, a conditional certificate? And, oh, it's good till 2025.
Correct.
And then your emergency plan is good till August 2026.
We're more than happy to, I'm not aware of the CVTA that you were discussing.
I mean, DCR is not going to make you drain the lake anytime soon. I mean, because they're all over the Commonwealth doing the same thing. I had a meeting with VDI. They said the DCR and the Dam Committee is all over the, all over the Commonwealth having meetings like you guys. So I think we just need to work, you know, work something out. I mean, have you been formally served yet?
We have not.
You've never been formally served?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I guess my issue too, I just saw a budget today. And, you know, we're stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I haven't seen any plans yet.
We have plans with them.
The conceptual plan, I mean, but for us to move forward, I really think we should be able to have some type of, you know, be able to see something. Some of our people should be seeing some type of plans.
Our dam engineer, David Krasinski-
Our, um, dam engineer, David Krasinski, is here. I think he's also provided the plans to Mr. Hathaway, but we have those back here.
It just said, during a presentation, it just said conceptual plans. It didn't say, it said, I think you spoke, it said conceptual.
I understand.
So I mean, I'm just thinking, I just need to, it, it's very frustrating. Uh, not, not with you, but just the DCR, I mean, they look like they're putting a, I, I know you're exactly right that they will not let us bid this project out first so we actually know where we are. You have to get the funding first, it makes no sense to me, no, nothing against you.
No, I, I get it, the grant process is, is laborious. And I think what the pressure is here now is that we've got these grants that we are ready to apply for and send out tomorrow that have an expiration date of being submitted by March fifteenth. And that would reimburse the county for ninety percent. Would he be happy to look elsewhere for the extra if need be? But if we could get that assurance of upfront funding for the county, that would-
We don't, I don't, how do you know it's going to be one point five?
Well, that's how we would have, we've had it priced out several times and I just spoke with Mr. Krasinski when I got here. Obviously, just like construction costs, everything ebbs and flows. So it could come in much lower, which would be excellent. It could come in higher. That's why I mentioned that we would be more than willing and happy to attach a not to exceed cost so that we're not coming back here next month asking for one point six or extra, anything extra. So one point five would be the final number that we're coming to you with.
But it's still, to do my due diligence with the taxpayers, I need to understand how it's going to be spent. I mean, the yard of concrete is sixteen hundred and fifty dollars I saw on this budget. I, I, is it some special concrete?
Yes, and, and that will depend, and Mr. Krasinski can answer some of these more technical questions. Because we have a roadway over our dam, we are a higher risk dam.
But I'd just like to understand some of that, I mean, I, I feel, I mean, that's a-
Oh, no, I completely understand, and I believe a breakdown was sent earlier of all those costs. And just to mention that as the repairs are being made on the dam, New Kent can be paid back incrementally. So you all aren't waiting until, you know, nine months, a year, however long the project takes, to be reimbursed, all those monies. You all can be reimbursed as we go through the various steps of the dam.
Mr. Sears?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, keep in mind, you know, Woodhaven has some money in their account right now, but their roads are privately owned and they have to maintain their roads. Uh, if any of you have ever been through there, it's heavily wooded and anytime a tree comes down and the trees have to be removed, uh, pavement replaced. They also own their own water company, so they have expenses there. We know what it's like running a utility department here. And they've already stated that the, one of the main water lines will have to be replaced going across the dam. And I just know that the, you know, whether we get funds, I think CBTA funds could be available, but there's seven point six million dollars in that account right now. And I just feel like, you know, if, if by chance they had to drain the lake, be a hell of a fish fry, I know that. But that's not going to happen, we're not going to let that happen. Um, also, um, can the county loan WPOA the needed funds for construction? The answer is no. Would the county assume liability if the decision was made to fund the reconstruction? No. Uh, if no action was taken and DCR drained the lake and removed the dam, the county would lose millions of dollars in waterfront real estate taxes over the next few years. And, you know, I would support this even, it's not just because it's in my district. If it was in your district, Mr. Moore here, I would support it. Thank you.
I just have a question.
Ms. Stewart?
Uh, I don't know who this question is for, maybe Mr. Sears or Mr. Hathaway. The homes that are on the lake, they're considered waterfront property. Yes, and if we drain the lake, are they still considered waterfront property?
No, no water.
Um, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't being naive in my understanding of waterfront property. Um, I was, you know, I think I've had conversations with the majority of the folks up here because this is, I think, a pretty complex issue. And I talked to DCR because I'm also a trust but verify person. Um, and they indicated that they had made a mistake with approving the plans originally and they were basically like, well, sorry. Um, and I, yes. So I thought that was great to acknowledge first. Um, but I've kind of struggled with this because I do think it's an unfair burden to not really have a lot of details right now. But I do think it's necessary, you know, if you are saying that what we could be paying as a county is only two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars only, but that's still a lot of money, divided by the roughly five hundred homes in the neighborhood, that's five hundred and twenty-five dollars a home. And if we are constantly touting that we're the fastest growing locality, I think it's kind of part of our responsibility to take care of the people that have helped it grow. And I think that it could be a good use of the funding while you all search for more funding if we do have seven point six million dollars sitting there. Um, but I understand, you know, there are considerations that we need to make going forward. So something that I would support helping the Neighborhood Association with, but I under, I do understand and acknowledge the other feelings of my fellow board members.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a lot more to say, but with the hundred phone calls I've had with David Smith, he pretty much said everything I was going to say, so I don't want to be redundant, so thank you.
And any additional information you all want, I can make a note of it here, try and get it to you this evening or first thing tomorrow. We are trying to be as transparent as possible. Um, I just know we're under a, a tight deadline with, with the March fifteenth.
But this grant comes up every year, correct?
I cannot-
Can I answer that? Hey, Thomas, can I answer that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rabbit?
That's not, uh, it's not always true. These, that's, and, and David Krasinski, Krasinski is, uh, with us and he's more familiar with it than I am. But these ninety percents, uh, well, not ninety, sorry, the sixty-five percent federal grants have just started. I mean, some years you can get construction grants, some years it's only engineering grants. Some years you can only get, uh, engineering grants. And sometimes, this is the first time I'm aware that the ninety percent grant's been available and it may not be here again. You know, it's based on federal budgets, so we, we may lose this opportunity, never have it again. We're, we're, I, I really don't understand the issue that the county is getting ninety percent of the money back. I just, it just overwhelms my thought. But, uh, anyway, it's, it's not always available. And Mr. Krasinski can, can, can go into more detail with his-
Do, do you have an approved stamped set of plans?
I have a stamped set of plans, they have to be submitted to DCR with the grant and everything else.
And you, and you submitted them to the county, you submitted that plan to the county?
Yes, we'll go to the county as well for the, for the land service permit, the county, yes. But, yeah, I mean, nothing, nothing is submitted to the county.
Can, can we get them?
I'm sorry, I can't let you speak.
And just to add on to the one question about the grants, we were just notified, I believe, about a week and a half ago of the additional state grant that DCR was willing to apply to this money, which covers that one half portion of the two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. So the, the combination of the grants coming together to provide so much reimbursement for funding is something new this year.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Pearson?
This all seems very rushed, um, very, very rushed. Our planning department hasn't even looked at those plans. Um, as far as the waterfront property, I did check with the Commissioner of Revenue's, Revenue's Office today and, and it would be a loss in revenue to the county of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars a year at the current tax rate. Um, but the other thing is, is this is more than one percent of our budget. It really should go to public hearing before we make any kind of action on this. It just all seems extremely rushed for a large amount of money.
I understand.
Mr. Moore, um, if I could ask, um, our attorney, there, if we would give them money and they would pay it back, that would be called a loan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, your answer then is no? We either give them the money or that's it?
Yeah.
I see, Mr. Chair, uh, I did talk with our delegate, Delegate Wyatt, this afternoon. Um, Mr. Sears and I just approached him for some additional options. And he indicated that there might be, and Mr. Smith and I talked about this as well this afternoon, there might be some additional funding in the current state budget that is yet to be approved for state dams. So I've put Mr. Sears, Mr. Smith and I all in contact to work through that. And my understanding was that Mr. Smith was going to send the delegate, um, the information to hopefully get something. Um, because until it's signed, we still have opportunity to get more money from the state. So if we could get it from there and not have to go through this process, I think that could be an amenable solution for everybody, if you guys get what you need and we don't have to spend the money on it.
Is that funding that's being approved this general assembly session?
Yes, yes. So he indicated that there were other counties that were currently seeking the dam money and he's on appropriation, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the problem is, um, we have to have the grant application submitted by April fifteenth, which is fraud day.
March fifteenth.
What, what we're, what we're hoping for is that y'all would just do a maximum not to exceed one point five. Then we would come back and whatever, with, you know, because the whole process, you can't, you don't have the plan to prove because DCR has to approve them ahead of time. And then when, once, once we got back, then you would have the opportunity to decline it after, uh, after we get everything settled.
It looks like, I guess, Ms. Stewart talked to DCR. Who knows what they're, you know, they, they messed up this first set of plans, you know? How long, you know, we're going to allocate this money? I guess my concern is how long is this money going to be tied up? Because, you know, we have a lot of capital projects within the county that need to be done. So that's, that's another concern of mine.
It's, uh, as soon as the project, the lady told me that, uh, usually within a few weeks after the project's completed, you get your funding back.
That's coming from the state and federal?
Yeah, because she, uh, the way she explained it to me, the state, the federal government gives the state money, the state administers it. We would just process everything to the state and the state would just, uh, allocate the money. In fact, one of the good things I found out today is you can actually get your money back, um, on a incremental basis. For instance, if you did grading, you could say, okay, grading's complete, it cost us much money, give that to the state, the state could incrementally give you your money back at that stage. Then you do some more work, you show them that that part's completed, they give you that much, you don't have to wait to the very end. But you can get money back during the whole process as, as the project proceeding along.
I don't think he understands, we, we can't give money and get it back. That's a loan and we can't do that. So that incremental has nothing to do with it.
The grants you can.
What, the grant, if we get the grant back?
If we get the grant.
We take the money back from the grant?
Yeah.
But we have to give the money.
Correct, there's got to be an assurance of funds before we can apply for the grants.
What's, what's pretty much assured is about two hundred and eighty thousand. It'd be the two hundred and eighty.
Yeah, you, New Kent would be repaid directly from the federal and state grants, not from Woodhaven or our property association.
And what happens if, you know, what happens, I mean, what happens if this project comes back at three million dollars? Because I, I mean, I could see that.
Oh, then, then it's dead in the water. No, I mean, like I said, we've gone over the price of this project time and time again, and again-
With contractors, I mean, just the engine?
With, with all the parties involved. Um, and it's, for the most part, stayed under a million dollars. Like I said, it's ebbed and flowed as costs change. And one point five or less seems to be the number where we're at. And that's why we would be happy to include a not to exceed clause so that we wouldn't be coming back.
Whoever's coming up with that number.
I, I've got that in an email, I can send it to you. I don't know why it was not provided.
I saw the, you know, there's a little spreadsheet today that, that I-
Yeah, the little breakdown of what each part of the project's going to cost. Um, if you would like some more information on like what that concrete means, stuff like that, I'm happy to bring Mr. Krasinski up here and he can explain-
Yeah, I, I am interested in what sixty, fifty dollars a yard of concrete.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, my name's David Krasnicki, I'm with A. Morton Thomas Engineering. And, uh, these are my plans, there's, these are ready to be submitted, ready to be approved by DCR. Uh, it will take, um, some time from them to go through it, but they will, they'll go through it. The, uh, area you referred to from DCR before was on the size of the spillway they were going to allow. They were allowing a thirty percent PMP spillway, which is considerably smaller than the ninety percent PMP spillway. When they decided that the road on top of the dam made it not allowed to have the reduction, that's when they told us we had to go ninety. We already had plans approved for thirty percent. It's just it was for the, they changed what the criteria was, what the spillway capacity had to be. All right, uh, you have questions on the concrete?
Yeah, how'd you come up with that number?
The, my estimate?
The sixteen fifty a yard.
Right, oh, uh, we, we get, um, a lot of projects going through, construction. Reinforced concrete is centering around the fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars per do, per yard. It does fluctuate, goes up, you know, during some periods it went up, other periods, five years ago, I was seven fifty a thousand dollars a yard. Um, what it is, it's the, the concrete, the reinforcing steel, the forming, the finishing and the curing.
That's the labor and everything.
It is, most of it, most of that cost is labor. If you go to the concrete plant, two hundred and fifty dollars you buy a yard of concrete. But you, uh, you do all the work to form it, put the steel in it, finish it, cure it.
No, that's understandable.
All right. Uh, the ACB system, it's called articulated concrete blocks, that's that darker green area that, that you were showing on, on the, the map. Um, that is, it's a, it's a tried and true proven method of, of spillway protection. It's, it's called armoring the dam. And it just uses heavy concrete blocks that are set in a shingling pattern, uh, to make the water run off and not actually pull dirt out of the dam. Usually when a dam over tops, particularly an earthen dam, it'll strip the grass and then it starts cutting the soil in a very quick erosion. The ACB blocks prevent that from happening, so that's, that's why that spillway section is there. And it's considered, it's considerably cheaper than regular concrete.
I think the board is willing to work with you, but I, I have to agree with Ms. Pearson, it's, it's rushed. Uh, it is a lot of money and I mean, there's a lot of dams in, in, in the county, so I think we want to work with you over the next, you know, few months and see if we can, we can help you out. But I don't think, what I'm hearing from the board right now is we're not ready to move forward with this project, this funding.
Mr. Hathaway, um, how many of those grants are available?
Excuse me?
Do you know how many of those grants are available and they only come up once a year?
I do not know how many grants are available and it's my understanding that the amount that's available changes from year to year based on the adopted state budget. Um, so there could be very little money available next year, it's-
And that's a hard, hard, um, due date is the fifteenth, there's no way to get an extension of that or anything?
That's correct. Um, with, with regards to the money that's in the grant program-
That, that's hard to believe because this has been going on for twelve years at least. And you can't get another extension?
Well, they'll, they'll issue the grants again for twenty twenty-five, coming in November. Uh, the grant program has been going on for fifteen-ish years with varying, various amounts of money in it. This year has more money in it than I think they've ever had. Uh, there is eleven and a half million, something like that, total in the, in the grant program. Uh, and it's a new thing that they're doing full-scale construction projects in the grants. The engineering grant program was originally set up, was set up only for engineering. They've expanded that to be able to do construction as well. And that, that's, that's why there's more money in it and that's why there's, uh, more, more, uh, why construction's being allowed now as, as a, as a, as an item. But, uh, yeah, it's, every fall, they put it out, uh, and they close February, March. This year, it's March fifteenth that it closes.
Do you know when, um, it would be awarded or when you'd be notified of the award after you apply?
Typically, it's about July fourth, uh, somewhere around that, that first week of July that they notified that they've actually been awarded. Uh, but last year, they actually didn't have as much grant requests as they had money. And this year, they have even more grant money. But next year, they, we don't know, uh, they could cut it in half.
I, we got one more thing. Um, you guys are coming to us, five hundred and some homes with no skin in the game and asking the rest of the residents of, of New Kent County to bail this project out. I, you know, it, it's roughly, the whole project can be done with five thousand. We, I live in Patriots Lanning, we have two dams. We pay somewhere around forty thousand dollars a year, every, every other year to recertify them. If our dam would leave, we would be assessed, we'd be five thousand, six thousand dollars on each home. We'd live with it and that'd be it. I, I, I don't, I, I don't know, you know, we, we have, that's private dams. We have one, the, the, the island dam is the same thing, it's a dam with a road over top of it. it. Those people spend an extra amount of money on their HOA to go to their, to their funding in case that dam or that road goes. They've been doing that ever since they've moved in. You know, the, the, the thought of doing the dam, doing the road, and then having to do the water, you know, where, I don't understand where that money would come from. You know, if you have to put a whole new water line through, if you have problems with your, if your wells, do you come back for, to us for that too? I, I don't understand.
I can answer just a few of those questions, and I understand where you're coming from. We are working on our neighborhood, we've gone through several, uh, property issues, uh, we are working to collect our dues from the owners. Right now, one of our only recourse is waiting for the house to be sold, um, and collecting the dues at that point. We are starting to put some liens on homes, so we are really working hard to try and collect these funds.
You have that ability to put a lien on a home?
I will, yes, we do, and we're, we're starting slowly, like I said, the, the, Woodhaven is having a bit of a transformation period, and we are working our hardest to get it on good graces and approved and, you know, up to every, you know, statute necessary. As far as the water, Woodhaven Water has always been self-sufficient. We would not ask for funding for that, that is going to stay with the Woodhaven Water Board, we will replace our wells, the water running underneath. Like I said, we are just asking for the assurance of the funds, um, and that way we can apply for the grant. I know this seems rushed, this is the first time we've ever had so many grant funds that we can say we can give ninety percent back of what we're asking to the county, and the county may receive that because it's coming from federal and state grant funds and not from WPO's pockets. But we are working, we do have, we do have skin in the game, I promise you. We're a great community, we're working very hard to get our community to where it needs to be, we're just asking for some assistance from the county at this time.
This is, I think, going back to what I was saying earlier, you know, we're obligated to taxpayer's funding, but who's going to monitor?
We are. I, I mentioned that in one of our.
But we haven't even seen, I don't, have you seen the grant? Have you seen the grant, I mean?
I got a copy of the application today.
Yeah, the full grant.
So we want to have staff in the county, you know, you know, probably administrating that, or, you know, seeing, you know, working with you to see how we knew, how we know we're going to guarantee to get those funds back. And as of now, we, no guarantee, we're just, besides what y'all are telling us, so.
Now, in the email that you got, the breakdown of the cost was, there should have been a copy of the current grant that we're prepared to submit on the fifteenth, that should have been included in that email. If not, I'm happy to email that to anybody else who needs that this evening. But we have had Dave Smith work diligently with DCR to make sure that this grant process, because we all know a grant process can be sticky and messy, but we are prepared to move forward, and I, I think we could have some success, we just need the assurance of the funds. But WPA would maintain the dam, the spillway, everything after that, we would not be coming back to the county to ask for assistance in maintenance or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir, quick.
Yes, well, what we're looking for is just, all we need tonight is just, uh, is assurance from the county that they would, that they would fund it. Then we could work out the sales that if it gets to the point where it's, you don't like the grant process, or you don't like the amount that's coming in, then you could say, we're, we're not going to participate in it if it's over one point five, or if it's one point six, then you, you know, we could come back to you and say, well, it's only a thousand more. So, I don't know why we couldn't just do, uh, some kind of an agreement between the two parties. You said the county's willing to work with us, well, and if you don't use the grant money, then if the county's willing to work with us in the future, then how, what's it going to pay for it then, except for county money?
Hopefully, I think, working with state, uh, officials, delegates and stuff.
What, what would be the limited amount that we would be able to do without a public hearing?
One percent of the budget, sir?
One percent of one hundred and six million dollars, so.
So, one point oh eight, we would not have enough money without a public hearing to be able to do it?
Right, and, you know, we did not schedule a public hearing today because it was my understanding what was requested of the county was a non-binding letter of support for the application, and as we move further into the grant process, um, and get a better understanding of the cost, then we would hold the public hearing to appropriate the funding. It's no need tying up one point five million dollars if the project ends up being one point one. But I believe that's what the, or it's my understanding that that's what the request is today, a non-binding letter of support.
Anybody else?
I, I do know of, of homeowners, I mean, one of our tests up here is to be fair and equitable, and I do know of homeowners in the Barrensville area that have repaired dam, a dam twice for a hurricane, and they, they did that out of their own pocket. So this is, this is a difficult, I mean, this is a, a precedent that we are setting by doing this.
That is a good precedent since the properties.
I, I can't, I can't. All right, we're going to move on, thank you, item two. Old Ferry Road Resurfacing Project, Reverend Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you. Now, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, you have before you a construction agreement for the resurfacing of Old Ferry Road. This project was put out to bid on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, we received bids, uh, mid-January and actually.
Let's have, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Continue the meeting. Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You have before you this after, this evening, a proposed construction contract with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling LLC for the resurfacing of Old Ferry Road located in Plum Point. The county took ownership of this road in the early 2000s. It was a requirement for the receipt of a community development block grant, which the county received to renovate a number of homes in the Plum Point community. One of the requirements of the grant is you could only renovate homes that were on public roads. I don't know if that's still a requirement, but that was the requirement back then. So therefore, the county took ownership of not only Old Ferry Road, but there were about four roads in the Plum Point community that we took ownership. So since the early 2000s, we have been responsible for maintaining this road, Old Ferry Road, which we have done. It's currently a gravel road and we're proposing that it be asphalted. We have followed all of the Virginia public purchasing requirements. This has gone out to bid. We've made it competitive. We received numerous inquiries while this was advertised, but only received one bid from Finley Asphalt and Ceiling. The bid has been reviewed by our engineering firm consultant and it is in line, the price is in line with their original estimate. The contract cost is $152,075.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway? Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I've got a few questions for Mr. Hathaway. First, how did we, and apologies that this happened before I got here, but we're here now. How did we get to just doing Old Ferry Road out of the numerous ones that were owned by the county in Plum Point?
Well, based on the traffic, based on the continued maintenance and based on the requests from the neighborhood, we have chose to asphalt Old Ferry Road. There are some other roads that we own, but they have a lower traffic volume. This has much higher, so therefore, yeah.
And I know you and I had emailed back and forth about the drainage plan, because I know especially last week with all the rain, there was significant flooding over there. I almost canoed from my house over there. But is there any plan or is there any way, and this might be a question also for our attorney, is there any way to approve the allocation now, but do something to address the drainage? Because I'm a little concerned that we're slapping $150,000 band-aid on the road without addressing the drainage. Because it was very clear last week on Old Ferry, right next to it is a whole field of water. Where's the water going to go? So I know, I know the people in Plum Point want the road paved and I want them to be happy, of course, but I also don't want us to be using $150,000 that's not going to hold up over time. So is there any, is there anything that we can do to better address the drainage since we do have a bones of a plan? And I know the, I know the last plan that you sent was about $500,000 and that's a much more than 150, but is there anything that we can do in the meantime to address the drainage or?
The, the problem with that area, Invitat has gone out there, they've reworked all the ditches in hopes to approve drainage and it's, it's had some impact, but very little. Problem is that area is just so flat and so low lying. It's just difficult to move water, even with the plan that we did. And we did hire Bowman to, who developed an engineering plan to address the drainage. That's where we got the $504,000 estimate from. I honestly did not have a lot of confidence in, in that plan. Number one is because we were moving water a long distance and it only had a three-foot fall to get to the river. My concern with that little amount of fall, if the York River backs up, we could be creating a worse condition than we have now by having water travel through that pipe in the opposite direction. That, that's been my, my concern and we, we can hire another engineer to, to look at it, but we did use Bowman. They're a well-known group, a large firm, and that was the best they could come up with.
Okay. I know Mr. Evelyn and I talked about, I didn't, I don't know if anybody else here has any thoughts on, I get nervous when we keep studying things but not doing anything. And I don't know if there's a recommendation or any ideas on, or is it just paving it as the today, so we can only worry about it later? I just would rather have a long-term view.
I, I think one of the problems, again, it's just a low-lying, flat area, but if you look at the aerial topography, there is a natural drainage that comes across that farm field and comes across Old Ferry Road that's probably been there for hundreds of years. And it's my understanding that there is one house that's really impacted by that because of the topography there, that was built probably in the 60s or 70s. By today's standard, that house would not be permitted to be built in, in that drainage area. Happy to look at it again. One of the things we are doing in the plans with Old Ferry, the road will be a little higher. So I, I don't think we'll have any issues with Old Ferry washing out, but we're still going to have the drainage issues in, in that area.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Steers, I want to point out, in the pricing, we're paying $10,000 to fill potholes. So if you have, if you need supplemental income, this can be a very good lucrative business for you. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
I know, as Mr. Lockwood said earlier, the folks in Plum Point really are looking forward to having their road paved. So I'd hope we could allocate the money, but I do want to reiterate, I would like to keep the conversation about the drainage going because it's not going to get better, as you stated, so.
All right. Does anybody else have any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd moved to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed agreement with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling LLC for the resurfacing of Old Ferry Road for a total cost of $152,075 to be appropriated from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other comments? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Motion passed. Our next item, FY year 2025, county administrator's budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You don't have it. Okay. Seems like we have a technical problem, but you should have printouts before you of the proposed budget and I will go over it briefly. And since we're going to spend an entire day on the budget on Friday, I'm going to hit the highlights this evening and then we can discuss some further detail on Friday at our budget retreat that will take place at, from nine to 1:00 PM at the New Ken Forestry Center in Providence Forge. It is a public meeting and the public is welcome to attend. This evening, I am presenting a proposed FY 25 budget totaling $113,379,280. And just in comparison, the FY 24 budget, our current budget that we're in, totals The adopted FY 24 tax rate, real estate rate, was 67 cents. We recently equalized the rate to 57 cents. I am proposing a 64 cent real estate tax rate. This total amount does not include the public utilities budget, which is a separate budget that operates as an enterprise fund, but I am proposing a public utilities budget totaling And for the public, the reason we keep our public utilities budget separate, because it is not supported by tax dollars, it is solely supported by user rates and fees. Also, to let you know, and this will be an important number for us as we further delve in, into this budget, one penny on the real estate rate equals $501,787. On the second slide, I'm really just going to pay attention to the general fund, which This slide is a revenue, is a summary of all the county revenue. And the reason I'm just focusing on the general fund, because that is the fund that you have the most control over through setting your rates, tax rates and application fees and so on. Whereas the other funds such as social services, Virginia Wireless, Airport Fund, those amounts are generally set by the state and federal government. But with the amount of the general fund that I've mentioned, the $74,463,155, that is an increase of $8,179 and 80, $786 from our current fiscal year budget. And I'm going to focus a little bit on that $8.1 million. The next slide you have before you is just a breakdown of the total budget as far as departments. As you can see, schools are $50 million, which is, is not uncommon in any locality budget. Schools are usually, generally about 50% of, of a locality's budget. And then second is capital projects, public safety, debt service, and you have the breakdown in front of you. If you flip to the next slide, there is a breakdown of that general fund revenue increase, the $8.1 million. As you can see, the lion's share of, of those revenues comes from the real estate tax. $4.5 million of new revenue proposed from the real estate tax. There's also an additional $1.9 million proposed of Colonial Downs revenue. And then you have the breakdown, personal property tax, that is an estimate of $387,444. The commissioner revenue will be at the budget retreat on Friday and will provide an updated number for us then. So hopefully, there'll be some additional funding available for personal property taxes. Our meals tax, a healthy increase there, which is an indication that our economy, our business community is, is, is doing well. Also, another healthy increase in our business license taxes, and we've not changed those rates, or proposing a rate change for next year. This is purely business growth, which is a good economy indicator. If we go to the next page, still focusing on that $8.1 million. This is an important page because this is the page that breaks down the expenditure of that $8.1 million. And the largest expenditure actually is a savings. We are proposing to set aside a reserve, a capital reserve, in the amount of $3.9 million. And this is from Colonial Downs revenue. We know that there are some big capital projects out there that we need to deal with and discuss, such as school facilities, public utilities and so on. And I would like for us to start setting aside reserves. So when it's time to move forward with those projects, it's not all debt service. The second item is school operating transfers. The bu, the school administration introduced their budget at their school board meeting, I believe, last week with the request from the county of an additional $3 million in operating revenue. Unfortunately, I could not get to 3 million in my recommendation, but I am proposing 2 million of additional funding for the schools for next fiscal year, which is a significant increase from this year where we funded an additional $600,000 for, for the schools. Also confinement of prisoners is a significant cost, the third highest cost for us, where we're estimating $692,640. And actually, this increase involves us going to a new jail system. We've been informed by Henrico County, who is our existing jail system, that our per diem rate for next fiscal year will go from, I believe it's about 57 now, and next year it will go to 97 cents, which is unacceptable for us. It's almost a $2 million increase. Therefore, we are actually touring the Pumonkey Regional Jail this week, actually, and considering moving our inmates to that facility. Pumonkey Regional Jail is in Hanover County. We've had several conversations with them and they appear to be very open to accepting our, our inmates. There's also a Colonial Downs transfer of $517,288. This transfer is to our operating budget to fund those one-time expenditures within our operating budget. So those are the top four expenditures of that 8.1 million. And what I've mentioned, just those four projects totals $7.2 million. So that is the majority of the 8.1 million. Flipping to the next page.
Mr. Hathaway?
Yes.
Question for you.
Oh.
On the, on page 12, the increase in per diem rate for confined prisoners, was the number that you put here, the number that it would be to stay in the current system or go with Pumonkey?
It's the number that it would be to go with Pumonkey. It's an additional cost from what we're paying, but it's much less than what we would pay if we stayed with Henrico. And, and, and I want to apologize too, because on the previous slide, I skipped the capital budgets, but actually, that first item, that $3.9 million, that is for personnel actions and adjustments. We are setting aside approximately $3.8 million in capital for a reserve, but I'll, I'll get to that in a few. But the 3.9, which is the highest expenditure and proposed expenditures for next fiscal year, that number is broken down on the next page, on page seven. And I'm sure we will spend a lot of time on this on Friday, but just a few highlights to this slide. $2.6 million are to cover funding actions that were taking place, that occurred in this current fiscal year. The full cost for a full year would be $2.6 million and we have budgeted for that. Also, we are proposing to add a new SRO deputy. I believe that is the only new position that I'm recommending for next fiscal year. And that's at a cost of $105,000, which I know seems a lot, but that I believe also covers the cost of equipment, gear and training. SRO officers have to go through specialized training to be, to have that position. There are several position upgrades that I focused on. I've paid attention to our director positions. I've looked at where they are currently at compared to the salary study that we did two years ago. And we actually just got results from a James City County salary study as well. We helped them by giving them our salary information and in return, they shared the results of their salary study with us. So I was able to use that study as well, which is more recent, to determine if increases were needed for staff. And what you have before you are a list of staff members that I felt their current salaries were not consistent with the market. And below that in the next category, I am proposing a 4% COLA, cost of living increase for all county employees. From my conversations with other county administrators in the region, other localities, it appears that most localities this year will be around 4%, 5% cost of living increase. And from our market research, we feel that that is suitable as, as well. We did receive notice of a significant health insurance increase for next year of 11%. And health insurance is just crazy across the board for all localities. We were told on average, there's a lot of localities that have experienced 15% to 20% increases for next fiscal year. So 11% is what we're dealing with. It is a lot. And I am proposing that we not pass that on to our employees and that the county absorb that, that full cost. You know, there's definitely signs that the economy is, is improving, but there are still struggles. Cost of living, inflation is, is still a real struggle for many of our employees. And I guess good news too, on and on, this 11% because, you know, we've, we've challenged Anthem, who's our insurance provider, on this number. We always do to see if, if we can get a, a reduction. And we, we do feel that our claim history for this current year is, is, is consistent with the increase. In fact, it, there probably could be a justification for a higher increase. One of the things that, that we're looking at, all in all, our staff is pretty healthy, but where we've gotten the claims at is spouses. But where we've gotten the claims at is spouses. So I still think it's, it's very important that we continue to cover spouses as well, especially if we want to be competitive and attract quality staff persons. Those are the main increases. Also overtime, there's a significant increase in overtime of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's mainly our public safety workers, actually, that's just about all, public safety. They have experienced some short staffing within both of those, those departments, which has caused the need for additional overtime in, in those areas. And then on the bottom, there's a breakdown of our public utilities fund. Again, we keep that separate from our general fund. In total, there's three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars worth of proposed increases for public utilities. That includes the four percent COLA for all staff, and it does include one new position, a construction project manager. The next slide, slide eight, employee compensation and benefits. I've talked about the four percent COLA, the insurance, health rate, our health insurance rates. This slide also includes a breakdown of our VRS obligations, our health credit rate, our VRS group life insurance, and our general liability insurance as well. There's been increases in, in those areas too. Slide nine, I will not spend time on because I attended two previous work sessions ago. I gave a presentation on the proposed capital improvements program totaling thirteen million, four hundred and sixty, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. I mentioned previously that I am proposing a future capital set aside. This is where that set aside is in our capital projects, and it's actually roughly three point seven million dollars. There is a new community center being proposed on the Warnet Trail property for one point eight million dollars and replacement of HVAC systems at the New Kent Middle School. Those are the top three capital projects. Slide ten just shows a breakdown of revenues, how we're funding our capital improvements program, which involves a combination of Colonial Downs revenues, our CIP cash reserves, CBTA fund balance, and always state and federal grants. Public utility fund. For the past probably six or seven years, we have not increased our utility rates. In fact, several years, we've decreased our rates, all while our costs are continuing to go up. We're seeing it in our maintenance costs, operation costs of the system, and luckily, we've been able to hold our rates steady and provide some slight decreases. I am proposing a four percent increase of our rates. Every year, we sit down with our financial consultants and we go over our pro forma. And we look at how our utility program is performing, planned expenditures, capital projects for the upcoming year, planned revenues for the upcoming year. And through that information and through that analysis, we work through what a proper rate should be. And I feel that a four percent rate is, is needed to maintain our utility system. And I would also have to also remind staff that we eliminated the Bottoms Bridge Avalorum tax last year, which was a form of revenue to the system, a form of revenue that we no longer have to fund and to pay the debt service. And debt service is another area that we look at on our utility system. So that is my, my recommendation. We will work through that on, on Friday. I am proposing no changes to connection fees or availability fees or any other fees that we charge in our utility system. I'd like to hold those flat. Total utility budget again is seventeen million, three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And the last bullet is a breakdown of capital projects versus operating. Slide twelve goes over as a summary of the public utility CIP projects, which I've also have gone over in detail at our previous work session. I'll just state that total CIP projects total nine million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred dollars for our public utilities department. Slide thirteen, which is the last slide, our proposed budget calendar. Again, we do have a budget retreat this Friday, March fifteenth, at the New Kent Forestry Center, beginning at nine. We are planning to have a budget public hearing on tax rate and fees at our April eighth meeting and a budget public hearing on the overall budget at the May thirteenth meeting. According to state code, we could not take action until ten days after the public hearing on the general budget. So we're proposing action on the general budget at our May twenty-eighth work session. That concludes my, my presentation. I apologize for the technical difficulties, but again, we'll have more time on Friday to go over this.
Anybody have any questions or?
Mr. Chair, I can ask Mr. Hathaway. Would it be too much trouble for, by the time we have our budget retreat on Friday, to have the surrounding tax rates?
Yeah, yeah, actually, we, we have that information.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, anybody else have a good to the retreat? I'm sure we have a lot of questions by then. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing this evening. Resolution R dash zero eight dash two four, CUP, CP dash zero one two four. Stephen Jackson, home occupation conditional use permit to train and board a K nine not belonging to him is on his premises. Ms. Ledoux?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief and just give an overview of the application and then introduce Mr. Jackson, who is here tonight, if y'all have any questions. This is just a layout of the subject property for reference. So Mr. Stephen Jackson has requested a CUP to train and board K nines that do not belong to him on his property, which is located at forty-six fifty-three Hopewell Road, near the Hanover County line. The property is Zoned A one and consists of approximately six acres. Section ninety-eight dash sixteen C of the zoning ordinance allows the Board of Supervisors to authorize with a conditional use permit the enlargement or expansion or intensification or operation of home occupations beyond the limits otherwise specified in the ordinance. A use of this type is allowed in the A one zoning district with a conditional use permit. The applicant has no intention of working with more than six dogs at any one time, and that's also a proposed condition of the permit. The standards for review of CUPs are set forth in section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the code and are listed in your staff memo. Staff received no public comments or any concerns from any of the reviewing agencies. The Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on February twentieth and voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to the board. And there are six suggested conditions listed in your board resolution, R dash zero eight dash twenty-four. I'm here to answer any questions and would invite Mr. Jackson up to speak.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for your time. I'm Stephen Jackson. I live at forty-six fifty-three Hopewell Road. I'm a dog trainer requesting a conditional use permit to train dogs on my property. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I have a couple after the public hearing.
Perfect.
I, I was, could anyone sign up for the public, public hearing?
Just Mr. Jackson.
No one signed up, so I'll close. A public hearing. Mrs. Chair, you said, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, I have an eighteen-month-old cockapoo that we rescued, and we are the third rescuer.
Oh, wow.
And this dog is eating everything we own, the sofas, the rugs, underwear, towels, blankets, everything.
Got your hands full.
Anything you could help us with?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can talk, for sure.
You got it, definite vote.
Thank you.
What, what kind of training are you gonna be doing?
So I do mostly pet dog training for just obedience, some behavior modification, sit, stay, down, come when called, in public work manners, things like that.
So like, no, like duck dog training?
I don't typically do that for clients, as far as, as paid or for hire. I have some family that does retrieving, so I have been involved in that. And also for myself, I do shitsin, which is a working dog protection obedience tracking thing personally. So I do working dogs on that side as well. But as for my business, I do not do retrieving. But if you're interested in retrieving stuff, I'm happy to, to help where I can.
Anybody else? Not entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion. I move to adopt resolution R dash zero eight dash two four.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Definitely aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to elected officials reports. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. First, wanted to thank Fire Chief Opet out there for letting me use Station Three last week for my office hours. We had ten residents of District Five come and spend ninety solid minutes talking with me about their concerns, what they love. They didn't love what they liked for lunch, but they don't like for lunch. We had a really good time and got a lot of concerns addressed and a lot of talk about the budget, especially for what goes into District Five. So appreciation to Chief Opet for that. And to our Deputy Sheriff McLaughlin, thank you for addressing the issues over in Eltham with the speeding. They were extremely excited to see the sign was up in less than twenty-four hours and complaining about the sign being down. So really appreciate your help with that. And just to everyone on the board, you know, that's been helping me, Mr. Hathaway, that's responded to fifteen emails in the past week. Appreciate everybody's support, and I'm just happy to be here with you guys.
Thank you. Ms. Steers?
Ms. Chairman, I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
I'm just, I'm gonna have a, a HOA meeting with the Groves on March twenty-fifth with Mr. Hathaway and Mr. Spolnick.
Mr. Moyer?
Excuse me, I will be having a WPOA meeting with the Woodhaven Shores people on March twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Also want to thank Chief Deputy McLaughlin for putting up some speed monitoring over in Oropox near Dispatch Station. It was one of those that called, next day it was there. The citizen that was concerned about it was overjoyed and showed a major difference in what was happening in the speeding over in that area. So I want to appreciate that. Also, tomorrow night, there's a, I could say a town meeting that will be put on by our public utilities, Michael, Michael Lang, our executive, talking about the water extension lines on two forty-nine. It's not just for the people on two forty-nine. There will be, there'll be road situations on, during the construction for that. So if you're interested in traveling on New Kent Highway, you might be interested in coming out tomorrow night. It's at six thirty, and it's at Quentin Elementary School. And I'd like to thank Dr. Nichols and his staff for letting us use that. Because, as we've talked about before, Quentin Community Center is booked every night. So I would hope the Warine Community Center will be too eventually. And also to mention that again for VDOT, Thursday night between five and seven, there'll be a design meeting of the gap, meaning the I sixty-four, Part B, at the New Kent Elementary School, as I said, from five to seven. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Really don't have anything. We're gonna put on our, Mr. Hathaway, we're gonna put on our website, the dedication. Have we made that announcement of sixty-four in memory of Ms. Page, that date? Is that?
We'll, we'll advertise that on our website.
And that's?
That is Wednesday, April third, at noon, at the Eastbound Rust.
Staff reports, any reports?
Yes, I'd like to announce our first, hopefully, first annual Raise the Woof, W-O-O-F event will take place April twentieth at Pinefort Park. The, it's, so bring, please, bring, bring your pet out. There's gonna be all types of treats for your pets. I even understand there's gonna be a ice cream food cart for your pets at, at this event. So we'll be at Pinefort Park from eleven to three o'clock. It's hosted by our Economic Development Authority, our Sheriff's Animal Control Office, and our Parks and Recreation Office.
What, what was the date?
Eleven o'clock, yes. April twentieth.
April what?
Twentieth.
Mr. Jackson, could I get an appointment before then?
Also, on that day, we'll have our recycling event right here in the administration complex. Time for that?
Nine to one.
Nine to one, right here. So if you have tires, need anything shredded, please come. There is no charge for, for this evening. And as we've mentioned, the State Commonwealth Transportation Board voted unanimously to name the stretch of I sixty-four through New Kent County in honor of Mrs. Patricia A. Page. VDOT is putting up signage now, and we will have an unveiling ceremony of the signage on Wednesday, April third, at twelve PM at the eastbound rest area. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody have any other business? Appointments delegated by district? Are there any?
I got one.
Mr. Moyer?
I move to appoint Joseph McLaughlin as District Two Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. No, it's, well, junior, I know, it is junior, I'm sorry, it is junior.
Anybody else? Ms. Watkins, will you call the role for the boards and commissions not delegated by district?
I'm trying to get too many more friends on.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, appointments of boards and commissions not delegated by district.
I'll say, I've got one.
Ms. Stewart?
I move to appoint Greg Thompson as a representative to the Housing Advisory Committee.
I also move to appoint Joyce Peterson as a representative to the Housing Advisory Committee. Ms. Peterson is here, thank you for agreeing. What can we, Ms. Watkins, will you call the role for the boards and commissions not delegated by district?
Ms. Stewart, I didn't catch the name of.
Ms. Stewart, I didn't catch the name of yours.
Mr. Greg Thompson.
Where's, sorry. Ms. Watkins, where's the Clean County one? Is that this?
The Clean County, um, is that this one? Yeah, it should be on this list.
Here it is. Oh, wait, no, that's not it.
Yeah, on page three ninety-five in the package.
Okay. Okay. I move to appoint Stephanie Ripchick as an at-large representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Ms. Watkins, will you call the role?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Next, regional boards and commissions, any appointments?
I think we have to solidify one or two that we did before that may not have showed up. I move to appoint George Stewart as the New Kent appointee to Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Policy Board to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. We get two seats, not an alternate. So, that's why.
And I move to appoint John Moyer as New Kent's appointee to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Executive Board to serve a four-year term, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Ms. Watkins, will you call, vote for the regional boards and commissions?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on Thursday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and the next work session will be held on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, both in the boardroom of the county administration. The board will also meet for a budget retreat at nine AM on Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at the New Kent Forestry Center, one-one-three-oh-one, Pocahontas Trail. Anybody have anybody, anything else? Any motion for adjournment?
Summit.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, will you call the role?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight.